Clerk, read the roll, please.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor McGonigal.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Sacheta.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
Counselor Makhaz.
Here.
Eleven members present, Mr. President.
Stand and salute the flag, please.
...... of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under all indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk, read the public hearing, read the first one, please.
Item number one is a public hearing. It's an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, to all parties' interests, in a petition for an auto repair mechanical embodiment trap Luigi Aserno, DVA European mode is five-eleven, Second Street.
Matters before you. Make a motion to open to a public hearing.
Motion. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made to open to a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion matters before you, the first one. At this time, I'll ask if people in favor, in favor or not in favor, so I will say three times. Is anybody in favor of this petition? Is anybody in favor of this petition? Now, would you like to say something to Mr. Aserno?
Can we invite him up, please?
I would invite him.
Okay.
The microphone.
You can say that to the microphone.
Now, you know, I didn't even know it was on his name. That's why I wonder, I'm here to get it back under my name.
All right, thank you, Mr. Aserno. Okay.
Thank you.
One more time, is anybody in favor of this petition? Seeing no one else, this part is finished. Now, I will ask if anybody's not in favor of this petition. Is anybody not in favor of this petition? Anybody not in favor of this petition, that part of the public hearing is over. Matters before you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, before you, is there any problem with this?
Paperwork is all in order.
That was my question. Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second.
Motion made, and, uh, motion made favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The order has been, we have to, a voice vote.
Have a voice vote.
Excuse me, votes for, votes for, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The order has been, the petition has been granted license. Clerk, please read number two.
Item number two is an order sponsored by Counsel Makhaz as President, to all parties' interests, in the petition for Verizon New England Incorporated on Charlton Street, from northeast corner to a Vintus section with Bowden Street, place approximately twenty, two-hundred-and-eight feet of UCG. Southwest link to proposed telecom manhole number four. From manhole number four, place approximately ninety feet of UCG southwest link to intersection with Brickyard Lane.
Matters before you. Motion open up. Public hearing.
Public hearing, second.
Motion made. Yes, we do, we have to, on each piece. Accept the motion to open to a public hearing. At this time, public hearing is open. Anybody in favor of this petition? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, my name's Everett Bryan. I'm a right-of-way engineer with Engineering and Data Solutions, representing Verizon New England at 459 Main Street in Saugus. And our petition is even as exactly as it was read, for approximately two-hundred-and-eight feet of underground conduit to manhole number four, and an additional ninety feet of conduit southwest to Brickyard Lane. This is necessary to provide service to the development down on Charlton Street, and we hope to do it this spring.
All right. Is anybody in favor of this petition? One more time, anybody in favor of this petition? Seeing that part done, is anybody not in favor of this petition? Anybody not in favor of this petition? Anybody not in favor of this petition? Seeing none? That part of the public hearing is open. Matters before you.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
We request from the petition for starting and ending dates, he can do it in his seat.
I believe you just haven't, uh, quit, uh, um, the dates again, please. The dates of our construction?
The construction, the actual underground conduit will be placed by the developers, my understanding from our engineer. But we will not occupy with our cables until after the grant of location is granted. That is the plan, as I understand it.
Uh, excuse me, make the motion again, please. Motion made, second for favorable action, roll call, roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The order has been passed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Clerk, read item number three, please.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, to all persons' interests, in a petition for an auto repair mechanical license for Lewis F. Narina, DVA Z Auto Care, 172 Chelsea Street.
Motion made, motion made, in second order to a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. At this time, open a public hearing. Is anybody in favor of this petition? Is anybody in favor of this petition? Is anybody in favor of this petition? Seeing none? Is anybody not in favor of this petition? Anybody not in favor of this petition? Anybody not in favor of this petition? Public hearing is closed. Matters before you.
On the motion, Mr. President, where does this exactly on Chelsea Street? Is this at Chelsea and Cabot?
No, no, this is on the corner of, um, Chelsea Street, right almost to the Springs. Used to be much ground. Right. This is a change, the owner is selling to these individuals.
Okay.
So where would this go? Would this go, change of, your change in license, would this go through the license board or?
To Community and Business Development.
Okay, that'll be a motion right there.
I'll, I'll, some more.
I would train, I would train for favorable and make the motion to send Community and Business Development.
Okay, motion made, uh, motion made, second, refer to Community and Business Development Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It has been referred to Community and Business Development. Clerk, read item four.
Item number four is resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, to conduct a ten-minute public comment period during this formal session.
Okay, motion made, second, to open up the public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Do we have any signatures?
Yes, we have five, and the first one is J.D.T. Realty Trust.
I think they're signing in for. Yeah.
Do we have anybody for the public?
Brendan Kaufman.
Brendan?
Hi.
Brendan Kaufman, how are you?
Did I say your name, sir?
Uh, Clarkston. I've been called every variation, I'm not sensitive about this one. Brendan Clarkston, forty-seven Tep Street, Somerville, Massachusetts. I'm the new managing editor over at the Advocate Newspaper. I just wanted to briefly introduce myself to all of you. I'm going to be covering your meetings in particular, so I'll be here every other week, so I just want you guys to know my face, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm here about the Seven Acre Park. It's been, there's plans for it to be redesigned, and one of my hopes is that the local community can have some input into the redesign of it, as well as the local community groups, like Bike to the Sea and Friends of the Malden River. In the long run, the back will be open at some point, hopefully to the river when that's developed. But currently, it's been a problem for a long time with unleashed dogs there. I walk there every day for an hour, no matter what the weather is, and it's an awful situation. I've been barked at, jumped on, nipped, growled at, but I continue to walk, and I've called and called the city over many months, asking them to do something about it. Finally, they put up signs last week, several signs throughout the park, to, it's the law to leash the dogs. So far, it hasn't worked, but they need encouragement by people who could ticket them, so I'm asking whatever you can do to urge people to enforce the law. There's a lot of walkers and joggers and people of different abilities trying to walk through there, and having dogs bounding towards you, even though the person says, oh, he's friendly. It doesn't matter, it's not a comfortable situation, and, um, people want to take their kids there to learn how to bike or skate, and they can't because of the unleashed dogs. Forget that there's a lot of waste that people don't pick up, that's another problem, but I've talked to many people in the neighborhood and that work in City Hall that are afraid to go there because of the unleashed dogs. People don't want to take their small dogs there, so I just thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you could help move this along to a safer place for everyone. Thank you.
Mary, who have your address, please?
Floyd Street.
Do you have it?
Yep, Floyd Street, Everett.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Leo, Counselor?
Jim Tautza?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Jim Tautza, and I'm president of Bike to the Sea. Steve Winslow, who's the founder, keeps on getting phone calls about that, too. We hear about dogs getting sick, drinking water in the puddles. He couldn't make it tonight, so I'm representing him. I'm representing the Bike to the Sea, actually. But, um, that was his main concern, and about when the, um, the dog park going to be built, so maybe that will kind of get the, instead of the dogs running free, but people are not really, like she just mentioned, the dogs are not on leeches, so we want to know when the dog park will be built, so the dogs can go in the dog park, and people can be with their dogs, instead of running them around, and like she just mentioned, being nipped and everything else, so that's, that's one of our concerns, and that's the only concern we actually have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any other speakers today? Oh, no, that's, uh.
Make a motion to, uh.
Close.
Close public participation.
Second.
Motion made, second, to close public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public participation is closed, and clerk, read item number five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by.
We have a sign in sheet.
We have a sign in sheet, I'm sorry.
Could we take items number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and the person's name is Tony Weeby, that would like to speak on those items?
Motion made to take items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, petition for Broadway Gas and Service, 356 Broadway, second-class motor deal license. Item number fourteen, petition for second-class motor deal license, CMF Webby DVA Glen Deal Gas and Service, 725 Broadway. Item number fifteen, petition for second-class motor deal license from BFW Incorporated, CMF Webby Doing Businesses, Ferry Street Gas and Service, at 153 Ferry Street.
All the paperwork in order?
Yes.
Favorable action?
Second.
Motion made, second for favorable action.
On all three licenses.
On all three licenses, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, that'll be a voice, votes, voice vote, roll call, no, roll call, excuse me.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon. Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, the order has been passed, uh, the license.
Mr. President, we have people here that are waiting to get appointed, and I believe that we should take that first, I'm sorry, suspend the rules.
Well, make the motion.
And, uh.
Why don't we make a motion to.
Suspend the rules and take item ten, eleven, and twelve off the calendar, considering.
Number six as well.
Six as well.
Motion made, and second, to take, um, items.
Six, ten.
Eleven, twelve?
Yes.
Six, ten, eleven, twelve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Clerk, read those, uh, orders, items.
Item number ten is an order sponsored by Counsel Makhaz as President, subject confirmed by the Honorable Board of Alden, Ald, Ald, Honorable City Council. I hereby appoint Alfred Latanzi as a member of the Everett Redevelopment Authority. Item number eleven, subject confirmed by the Honorable City Council, hereby appoint Vincent Rigucci as a member of the Everett Redevelopment Authority. And item number twelve, the subject confirmed by the Honorable Board, Honorable City Council, hereby appoint David Rigucci as a member of the Everett Redevelopment Authority.
Mr. President, item six, who's with that?
You read item six.
Six. Item number six, subject confirmation by the Honorable City Council, hereby appoint Attorney Daniel Napolitano as a member of the Everett Redevelopment Authority.
For our rules, I'd like to refer this to Community and Business Development Committee.
Second.
Thank you.
You have a second on that?
Yes.
Motion made to refer these four, um, nominate confirmations to the Community and Business Development Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Counselor Capone.
On the.
On the, on the point, just want to make sure that the members are aware, under our Council Rules 20A, it says that any mayoral appointment other than public safety has to go to the Legislative Oversight Committee. So this is absolutely nothing against any of these individuals with their names here, these are quality people, so just under our rules, they need to go in the committee, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that before they vote. I want to make sure that the people here and the people at home understand that this is nothing against these individuals, because I could people here on this paper.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we can suspend that rule, and I'll take, if the city clerk can, please.
On the motion to suspend the rules.
Wait, wait, why don't we just take, why don't we take the first vote on the first motion?
We have to suspend the rule, rule is, so we make a motion to suspend the twenty?
Yes.
Second.
On the motion to suspend, Counselor Capone.
No.
Counselor Delasola.
No.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
No.
Counselor Napolitano.
No.
Counselor Sacheta.
No.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
No.
Four yeas. Seven nays. So goes the.
Yeah. The, uh. Four yeas, seven nays is referred, it goes to committees.
The Community and Business Development.
Second motion. Yeah. So the motion here.
Just to refer to Community and Business Development.
Yes. Motion made.
Motion, motion made, second, refer to Community and Business Development Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, one opposed. The ayes have it. Clerk, read item, five.
Item number five is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, accept a donation of fifty dollars from Gianna DeAngelo Dunn in memory of a son to Sue Paris to the City of Everett's Office of Human Services, Elder Services Program.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman, and a letter of thanks.
Second, motion made, second, to, uh, accept the donation from Mrs. DeAngelo, roll call, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The order has passed, and send a letter of thanks to Mrs. Dunn.
Mr. President, can we please suspend the rule and take item number eight?
Second, the motion.
Motion made, and, and second, to take item number eight.
Item number eight is an order sponsored by Counsel Makhaz as President, accept a hundred-dollar donation from Jim Mitchell, DVA the Advocate Newspaper, to the Office of Human Services, already pro, Graham McCown.
Favorable action, second motion.
Favorable action, second, roll call, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Motion made and passed, to accept the hundred-dollar donation, and a, a letter of thanks be sent to the Advocate Newspaper.
Can we suspend the rules and take items number twenty-one and twenty-two, please? This is on the sign sheet, Mr. President.
Motion made to suspend the rules, take items twenty-one and twenty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk, read item twenty-one and twenty-two.
Item number twenty-one is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, petition for lodging house license, fifty-one Cotty Street Realty, from Robert H. Lacudara. Item number twenty-two is also sponsored by Counsel Makhaz as President, petition for lodging house license, eleven to thirteen Ellsworth Street, from Robert H. Lacudara trustee.
Is all paperwork in order?
All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second, roll call, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The order and license haven't passed. Clerk, continue reading in the order.
Item number seven is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, subject confirmed by the honorable Board of Alden, hereby appoint Joseph Gaff as a sworn waiver for the City of Everett for one year, expiring January twenty-fifteen.
Is Mr. Gaff here, for any chance? Is there a Mr. Gaff? Okay, what's the motion on here?
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion made, what's that?
Suspend the rule and favorable action on the order.
Mr. Chairman, on, on the suspension, I don't believe it has to be suspended, I believe this might be on the calendar accidentally, because I, I, I think this might pass public safety, because of the police officer that's doing this, you know, he's, uh, he's waiting trucks and everything, so I don't.
So we don't have to send this to a committee. I don't know if that was the Joe Gaff we're talking about, that's why.
But I, I think that, I think, no, I think.
No, we don't have to, uh, public.
Favorable action, huh? Second motion. Favorable action.
Motion made, and second, favorable action, roll call, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta. Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Mr. Gaff has been sworn as a, uh, sworn way of the City of Everett, one to, uh, clerk, next, read next item, I believe.
Item number nine is an order sponsored by Counsel Makhaz as President, to accept a hundred-dollar donation from Salsichetta to Department of Veterans Services.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman, and a letter of thanks.
Motion made, second, uh, to accept the hundred-dollar donation, clerk, read the roll, roll call, please.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
We accepted a hundred-dollar donation from Mr. Sacheta, send him a letter of thanks, or holler out to him, Mr. Sacheta.
Item number sixteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, petition for a lodging house license from David A. Marley, DVA, uh, one thirty-four Linden Street Lodging, at one thirty-four Linden Street. Everything's in order.
Favorable action?
Second.
Motion made, second for favorable, all in roll call, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Can we, uh, can I make a motion to take items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-three, uh, and take them collectively, they are our license, and license for petition.
Yep.
Paperwork, all in order?
All paperwork's in order.
Counselor McGonigal.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the motion, um, I see some of them, uh, have some, uh, extra activity at them, um.
Could we take?
Maybe some of them should be discussed in public safety.
I believe if the housing.
Which one?
Well, take them individually, and let's, uh, let's get on the line on them, okay?
I'll suspend, I'll suspend that motion.
So in that motion, uh, motion been suspended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, clerk, which, which.
Item number seventeen is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, petition for lodging, uh, lodging house license from David A. Marley, DVA Fennels, at three thirty-six Broadway.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the motion.
Counsel McGonigal.
Is it public safety, Mr. Clark?
It's Community and Business Development.
There's a motion on there, really.
Into Community Development.
Community and Business Development.
There's, I mean, there's nineteen violations with fourteen rooms, gentlemen.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second, to refer this to Community and Development, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is referred to Community Development. Clerk, read the next issue. Next order.
Item number eighteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Makhaz as President, petition for Joseph Astulo, JNT Realty, DVA Joseph Lodge, at three twelve to three fourteen Broadway.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second, uh, motion made, and second, uh, favorable action, clerk, roll call, vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sacheta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Makhaz.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The petition has been granted, as well as the license. Clerk, read item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Makhaz as President, petition for lodging house license for Bill Morehouse, seventy-six Norwood Street, from Caritas Communities Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to refer to, uh, Community Development.
Community and Business Development.
Motion made, second, refer to Community and Business Development, all in favor? Opposed? It's been sent to, uh, Community and Business Development. Clerk, read the next, uh, order, please.
Item number twenty is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquesi. His president petition for lodging house license for Hancock Hotel at nineteen Hancock Street from Caritas Communities Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, once again, refer to, uh, make a motion to refer to Community and Business Development?
Second.
Motion made second to send to Community and Business Development. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's been sent to Community and Business Development also. Clerk, read item twenty-three.
Twenty-one passed, twenty-two passed. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquesi. His president second-class motor deal license to Supreme Court at three Everett Ave. From Romolo Aguado, President. This is a new license.
Is this a new license?
New license.
Refer it...
To Community and Business Development.
Refer that to Community and Business Development.
Motion made to send us to, uh, Community and Business Development. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's been sent to Community and Business Development also. Clerk, read item twenty-three.
Twenty-one passed, twenty-two passed. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquesi. His president second-class motor deal license to Supreme Court at three Everett Ave. From Romolo Aguado, President. This is a new license.
Is this a new license?
New license.
Refer it...
To Community and Business Development.
Refer that to Community and Business Development.
Motion made to send us to, uh, Community and Business Development. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Fable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made second for favorable action. Clerk, roll call vote.
Item number twenty-four is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquesi. His president Community and Business Development Committee report on petition for a fortune tell license from Debbie Green, nineteen thirty-six, Revere Beach Parkway, with recommendation for favorable action on the issuance of a sixty-day temporary license until the building owner pays a pass through water sewer bill, at which time a permanent license would be issued.
Fable action on the order?
Second motion.
Motion made second for favorable action. Clerk, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel De Florio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquesi?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero eys, Mr. President.
The ordinance has been granted as well as a license. Clerk, read item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is a legislative affairs and elections committee report to amend City Council Rule seven point five executive session by deleting the last nine words and under the advice of the city solicitor's office with a favorable recommendation to amend City Council Rule seven point five A by deleting the last nine words and under the advice of the city solicitor's office.
Motion to accept report?
Excuse me, Counsel Rosa.
We have to accept, uh, a motion to accept, uh, report and place on file. But, uh, I actually have a question on this. Um, and I spoke to, uh, City Council John Hanlon last night in regards to this. And I want to make this very clear. I understand there were rules of when we can go into executive session and when we can't. I understand there's a guideline to that. But if any of the councils want the opinion of the city solicitor, I believe they should be able to get that without a vote of the board.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I want to make sure that this is clear.
And that's what they say. This is the saying.
Without the vote of a board. In other words, if I decide that I want the opinion of the city solicitor, the board doesn't have to let me vote because if the vote, if the board votes no, that means I can't get an opinion. That's first. Second is, I want to make sure that when we ever go into executive session, that the city solicitor is there. She's an attorney. She gets paid to be the city solicitor to represent us for the citizens of Everett. I am never going to be responsible to put the citizens of Everett in a lawsuit. The city solicitor has to make that decision. So, I want to make sure that that's clear because I'm not clear on this order.
Uh, good, uh, Counsel Capone?
I, I recommend that you make an amendment to the, uh, the, the rule that basically says that, that, uh, the vote of one, or the inquiry by one member seeking the solicitor's opinion tends to fail.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So, basically, I, I would like to make the motion to amend it so that if one member wants the opinion of the city solicitor, they, they can do so.
So, we're going to amend it by the vote, the vote by one member?
Mm-hmm.
And where would this come on this, uh, piece here?
City Council, City Council, only one more of the President of the Massachusetts Meeting Law.
I believe that's a separate... That's a separate...
Make it C.
Letter C?
Let it C.
Okay, so the motion here is to amend, uh, the seven point, is it seven five B or C?
It's seven point five A.
That's what we're deleting, right?
Yeah. And we're adding seven point five C.
Okay, so I'll...
By adding, that it be amended by adding subsection C, um, the advice of the city solicitor, um, may be obtained upon the, uh, recommendation of one member.
Read it again, Mike.
By adding subsection C, that, um, uh, the, uh, the advice of the city solicitor on the legality of the executive session should, can be, uh, shall be requested, shall, no. May be requested by...
That's, that's not exactly, not what we want. What we're saying is that any time that the board, any member of the board wants to ask the city solicitor to come forward, it only requires one member. Has nothing to do with executive session.
Exactly. But what's before us right here before we do anything?
Pardon?
My, my issue before us is twenty-six. We're deleting the last nine words. So, what, so are we deleting this and then are we amending it to something else? Or are we adding to this? Because if you read this, it says by deleting the last nine words and under the advice of the city solicitor's office with favorable recommendation to amend City Council seven five A by deleting the last nine words and under the advice of the city solicitor's office. Are we adding to that or are we deleting something?
No, we're making a new section. Actually, we should do that on another day.
Item number twenty-seven, let's say here's the election committee report to amend City Council seventeen A by deleting the last fifteen words and certain in place thereof the words be placed on the maintenance request section of the city council agenda. With favorable recommendation to amend City Council Rule seventeen A so that it now reads, all maintenance requests shall have been first reported to appropriate city departments and or mayor's office prior to appearing on the business agenda. And to amend City Council Rule seventeen F by deleting the mayor's office and inserting in its place their respective department.
Motion to accept the committee report?
Second.
Motion made to, and second to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion.
Motion made favorable action, roll call vote.
Mister Chairman, on the motion, so I understand this one, ladies and gentlemen, that what you're doing here is just removing, um, the mayor's, like we talked about in committee. You're gonna remove where it says, uh, been first reported to appropriate city departments and/or the mayor's office.
It's the same.
So what it means, we can, we, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we can send it to a department right away, we don't have to wait for the mayor's okay to send it to the department. But we also will send it to the mayor, if the need arises.
I, I, like, like I talked about in committee, um, Mister Chairman, I think we're trying to reinvent the wheel, I, I don't see anything wrong with leaving, and I don't wanna get into a big debate over it, but I don't see anything wrong with leaving the mayor's office. Like I said in, in, in that, um, committee, we call department heads, okay, and it says it in our rules, I don't, I can look it up, but if they don't respond in a timely manner,
Yeah, there we go.
then, you know, then you go to the mayor's office, you know, before you put it on the calendar, I think you have that right, I think if you call a department head, when a constituent asks you to do a service for them in the city, and that department head doesn't get back to you within a day or two, then you, you know, I think the best thing you do is pick up the phone and call the mayor, I think that's all that's saying, I don't think it's, you know, that we really have to reinvent the wheel, I mean, all of us should, should be able to call the mayor and say, listen, I need help with this. And, and we've done that in the past with, with different mayors, I just, I don't understand why that has to be changed for whatever reason, I'm just giving you my opinion, thank you, Mister Chairman.
Counselor Sonny.
Thank you, um, I believe in committee, we, we did change it to back to mayor or maintenance department, so I think we were covering both, so we can send it right to the maintenance department first, and if not, then we go to the mayor's office, so that's, we did change that in committee to read what, what, um, Counsel McGonigal mentioned, so, um...
So how will this actually read, with favorable recommendation to amend City Council seventeen A, now reads, all maintenance requests shall have been first reported to appropriate city departments and/or mayor's office prior to it-
Maintenance or mayor's office.
And that's how this will read?
It's supposed to be maintenance, they respect the department.
Mike, is that, is that the actual?
Yes, it's, um, so that it now reads, all maintenance requests shall have been first reported to appropriate city departments and/or mayor's office prior to appearing on the business agenda.
Right, that's the way that-
Okay.
Mister, Mister Chairman, no, and with that said, um, favorable action, I, I'll second, uh, Counsel Hanlon's motion, now that I understand just, just what the counselor was doing.
Uh, motion made in-
I see the change.
Motion made, second for favorable action, uh, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sonny?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The Elections Committee report to amend City Rule seventeen A has been accepted.
Item number twenty-eight, resolution sponsored by Counsel Del-
Chairman, could we take items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four collectively, accept the committee report, grant further time, waive the reading?
Second the motion.
Motion made to take items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, uh, thirty-three, and, uh, thirty-four and to waive the committee, waive the committee's readings?
Grant further time.
And to grant further time.
Accept the reports.
Accept the reports and grant further time, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And granted further time.
Item number thirty, resolution sponsored by Counsel Richard Del Sol, Government Operations, Public Safety and Public Service Committee report, to have no parking signs moved across from the police state so that the sidewalk can be plowed in the interest of public safety, to recommendation refer it back to sponsor.
Uh, Counsel Del Sol?
Yes, I, I talked to the department head, Kevin Noonan, this was resolved, I just want to say a lot of thanks, Kevin Noonan and his department.
Uh, motion made to refer back to sports also to, uh-
Second.
Uh, 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 where the thanks to, uh, Mister Noonan at the, uh, building department, uh, where the department-
Motion accepted, report.
Second.
Second.
Motion made to accept the referral back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? For some back to sponsor, who else we, thirty-one?
Item number thirty-five, ordinance sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay, is present, revised ordinance of the City of Everett hereby amended by modifying section numbers as listed relative to changes to the zoning ordinance to coincide with the new city council, favorable recommendation received from the planning board, city council public hearing held, enrolled and sent up for a dayman.
Favorable action, Mister Chairman?
Second.
Motion made, second for favorable action, clerk, roll call, vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sonny?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Favorable action you have ordained, this ordinance, uh, clerk, read item thirty-six.
Item number thirty-six, an ordinance sponsored by Counsel Michael Maccasay is present, revised ordinances of the City of Everett, now hereby amended by modifying section numbers as listed relative to changes to the ordinance to make them coincide with the new city council, committee names and structures contained in the recently adopted city council rules.
Favorable action on the honor.
Motion made, motion made, now second for favorable action, clerk, uh, roll call, vote please.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Palatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sonny?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Maccasay?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The ordinance has been ordained. Clerk, read item thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven, is resolution sponsored by Counsel Salvatore Sichetta, representing for mayor's office and planning and development office to bring us up to date next meeting as to when Seven Acres Park is gonna be remodeled and if a dog park is gonna be included.
Uh, Counsel Sichetta?
Yes, uh, we heard tonight from a woman that walks that park, I've heard from another, number of people that walk that park, I also would like to walk that park. The fact of the matter is, you can't walk the park because there are a number of dogs down there that are running around without any leashes on them, and you just can't do it. Now, this park originally was made as a memorial park, people spent hundreds of dollars for bricks to be put there, and this park is going to heck. I'd like to know when the money that we provided in the capital improvement plan is gonna be used so people could actually walk the park, people could walk their dogs in a dog park, and the place is gonna be, uh, and, you know, habitable. Uh, so, I'd like to send it to committee and, uh, have before the committee, uh, someone in the planning development office or the mayor's executive person. I make that a motion.
On the motion, Mr. President, I just want-
On the motion, uh, Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you, I just want to accomplish such that I have also received numerous complaints, so, uh, but we have someone here now, is it possible to hear from them now, or do, do we want to hear from them?
I understand, I understand we have to send it to committee, we can't have no area-
Well, we can always suspend the rule, only because we have Jamie from Community Development here, but we also have a person that's interested, so she could hear what's going on.
Okay by me.
I mean, my understanding is that you could suspend the rule, it, it, not everything has to be sent to committee, so if we can resolve something on the floor, why shouldn't we? Uh, I mean, that's up to the sponsor, I don't wanna take anything away from him, but we can suspend the rule and have Jamie come up.
I, I'd like to have it taken now and suspend the rules, sure.
Okay, I second that motion.
Motion made to spend, uh-
Have Jamie come up.
No, just have him come up now, would you like to invite him?
Do we have, do we have Mister-
Do we have, um, Mister Erickson up, please? Yeah.
Yes, Mister Erickson, I know that you've spoken at length with Counsel Bruno on the, uh, the soil contamination there, but beyond that, there are people that wanna walk that park and they can't walk the park because the dogs are running around there freely with no leashes. Secondly, the entrance to that park is none, how do you get in there, a person my age cannot walk down that steep incline, that's not even a walk, it's a park through a couple of bushes. Um, so I'd like to have it taken care of as soon as possible, and I understand we approved a lot of money to remodel that park in our capital improvement, when could we possibly see that started?
Now it's on?
Yep.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, counselors, uh, for inviting me up today, um, the setup is new to me, so I apologize if I'm just getting used to seeing everybody right here, uh, which is, which is good to get used to, something new. Um, the questions, it, it sounds like there's about three, I guess, separate questions as part of this overall discussion, um, I'll take them just in order as what we've heard tonight. Uh, one is regarding the active use, the current, present day use of the park, uh, as a de facto dog park whereby, uh, people often walk their dogs there. Um, that's something that, uh, we've also in, in government have heard many, uh, discussions about, issues about, complaints about, um, I was actually talking with, uh, the police chief as well as the, uh, director of city services today, Jay Markot. Uh, the two of them are actually meeting, I believe, tomorrow, if not later this week, to come up with a solution, um, it might include a temporary fencing area that could be a, a de facto or a temporary dog park until we do a final design and construction of a future park there. Um, but they're very well aware of that situation and they do wanna, um, fix the situation because it's, it's certainly a concern, um, of ours as well from a public safety as well as just a public use, uh, quality of life perspective for the use of that park. Um, the other question that you had was access to the park, um, oftentimes, uh, well, actually, a couple of things that happened recently about access to the park that we did do some improvements for, um, there's a couple new access points off of the Bike to the Sea Trail onto the park, uh, those were recently paved as part of the Bike to the Sea project. Um, I can't say that they are currently being plowed, I don't know the current condition of them, I do know Jay Markot and the City Services Department, they do plow, uh, on a regular basis when snow occurs on the Bike to the Sea pathway, I'm not sure if they're getting the entrances into the Seven Acre Park, I'll check with him on that to see if we need to improve the conditions in the wintertime. Um, long-term solution though, and this, I guess, feeds into the third question, which, which is regards to the use of the appropriated funds for the design of the park, um, we actually have a designer under contract, that contract was only recently executed, so we haven't really started the full-on design concept or, or process for the park itself, other than, uh, what you have in, or what was presented to, um, the previous city councilor, which men, many of you were part of in the capital improvement plan, um, last year, which included a schematic design that I believe had an, an all-weather track, an all-weather field with multiple sports on that. Um, I think we had a couple tennis courts and a dog park, uh, all incorporated into that design. Um, we do intend to hold at least one or if not several public meetings during the design process, and we can certainly, um, make sure that that's available to you as well, um, uh, just to make sure that we get some feedback from the public, it's very important to make sure that we are incorporating what, what the public wants into the park. Um, even though Seven Acre sounds like a large space, it's actually quite tight when you take into account all the things that we know, we've heard from the school department already and many others, what we need in that park, such as the all-weather track and, and, um, the potential for, uh, tennis courts or other accommodations to make sure we can accommodate, you know, sports and the like at, at the youth level as well as the high school level. So, the park does start to become smaller and smaller once you start having to accommodate certain items like that, and so the dog park, um, can still be likely incorporated into the design, but we'll have to do full-on design work, and fortunately we have a designer on board right now to, to do that work. So in the next probably few months, you'll start to, um, see some traction on the actual design work. Um, with that said, the design will take several months to complete, six to nine months to complete, and then we'll have to go to actually bidding and constructing the project, so we'll, we'll likely be asked, talking with you about doing a bond appropriation for the construction work in the next, um, few weeks, if not months, so that we can actually construct the product that we designed.
Counsel, motion made, Counsel McKinnon?
Yes, uh, Jamie Erickson, uh, we, we went over this back and forth with Counsel Woman Bruno was here from the last council, uh, but her, her main concern down there before any of this was going to happen was the soil testing, has that been done yet?
The soil testing has not been done because of the weather conditions, we just can't do soil testing when there's a mound of snow and, and this, quite frankly, the soil is frozen, it's just not conducive to do, doing the soil testing. So for that purpose, we do have to wait until, until the spring regardless.
So this will hold this up, any of these plans?
The soil testing will not hold any of that up, no.
Okay, so it'll be done?
We, we're gonna move forward with the design regardless of the soil testing because we can do all that concurrently, um, in reality, as part of the design, um, the designer and, and his sub consultants are going to be reviewing all of the environmental reports that have been completed on the site up to date, so that they know what the issues are when it comes to soil contamination on that site. Um, he'll likely, with his subs, either during the construction process, definitely during the construction process, but maybe even in pre-construction, have to do a round of soil testing anyway, um, we can certainly expedite that to accommodate Counsel Bruno's request from the previous session, um, but it might actually coincide nicely with the spring coming up, if we, if we continue to have the winter that we're having, we won't be able to get out there probably until April or May anyway, so it might actually be, uh, be completed as part of the design process.
And how will it be done, how will it, uh, it's not gonna be just a visual test?
Nope, no, um, soil testing can be, it can be done in many different ways, um, the initial round of what we had done out there was not a test, it was more having an LSP review the documents and, and providing us with an indication as to whether they felt that the cap that was put on the site was damaged in any way or was thought to be, thought to be compromised, in his professional opinion, it was not, um, thought to be compromised. With that said, soil testing can take different forms, um, a lot of it depends on what you're looking for, in the case of what we're talking about with Counsel Bruno's request, um, it's, in all likelihood, we'll be doing just a series of simple, boring testings whereby you just literally take a machine or a handheld thing that you just stick into the ground, take out soil, usually depending on how deep you need to go, two feet, a couple feet deep, um, then you send that result off to a lab, and you can do that in multiple locations. It's usually, you know, inch, in diameter that you just stick into the ground, you can do more invasive testing, you can literally dig test pits out there, but for the purposes of what we're talking about, I'm thinking, let's start with that initial test because it's, 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 it can get costly, but we can do something more simply.
The initial testing, cost-wise, what was that going to be around, did you have that?
Um, the initial testing, it, it depends on, sometimes it depends on the, on the consultant's schedule as to when they can get out there and, and how they do, but usually it can be, um, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Palatano?
Thank you, um, I was on the, I remember the last session, but I was in a member of the session that originally approved all the work undone down that park, I do remember, uh, we had very extensive conversations with the engineers and developers, particularly about, regarding the contamination, and the one thing that, that sticks to me, uh, repeatedly was that they continued to stress the fact that the land use down there would be for passive use. I'm concerned that, uh, we're now talking about track, that would not classify while fall under passive use, what has changed barring any extensive testing that would, that would justify that, has that, has, has caused that, that situation to change, why is it no longer, uh, only usable for passive use?
Uh, the current, present day, today, uh, uses for the site, you're correct, they are currently, as they stand, there's an AOL activity use limitation on that site that says it's to be used for act, for passive recreation. Um, I was, uh, I've actually been working with an LSP on our end who says that it is possible to amend that AOL, uh, to accommodate an active recreation use, couple of things we would need to do as part of that is make sure that there's a very distinct and strong engineered barrier, is what the term is in, in, in the engineering world, uh, that would prohibit and very much restrict any sort of penetration of the contaminated soils. When you talk about an, an all-weather track with an all-weather field, you're talking about many, many layers of engineered barriers between any sort of contaminated soil and the surface of the park, oftentimes when you have a no active recreation use, um, on a park space, it's because you have a natural surface that might be, there might not be any physical engineer barrier between the natural surface and the contaminated soils. Um, when you start introducing engineer barriers, which, I wasn't here at the time when that park was, um, going through the rehab project, it could have been cost prohibitive at that time, it could have just been not part of the project at that time, um, you can oftentimes find that an engineer barrier, uh, is sufficient and, and will allow you to be a little bit more flexible with the use itself.
My concern is that, I recall what we needed to go through just to be able to get it approved for passive use.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's been no treatment done since then, so I'm just concerned that, uh, to what, what we had to do before with the extensive testing, and we had much more, we had much more money, it was a different type of project, it was a different time.
Right.
And I'm, I'm just concerned that, that we're not, you know, that we're not short cutting something to make that land possible, usable for a purpose that may cause health conditions down the road. Uh, I remember, uh, myself, some others, we're, we're very tied in to all the discussions on the contamination down there, uh, to the point where, at first, we weren't even willing to sub the land, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, there's no shortcuts being done, and I'm not, and I'm sure there isn't, I'm sure there isn't, but I'm concerned that we've gone from something that ten years ago was, where we were told, yeah, you can use it, but we wouldn't use, recommend being done on a regular basis.
Right.
To now conduct a tract of that stuff.
Yeah, part of that, uh, like, again, I wasn't here ten years ago, so I can't speak to how the conversations were then, but I, I do know there's, um, a lot more knowledge as to what can be built on top of what types of soils and, and our current review of what the contamination is on that site. Um, it's been all indications by our, uh, LSPs and other people that have been helping us, assisting us through the design process that, yes, we can work with an engineer barrier that will protect and make sure that it's safe for public to use, and we will be able to incorporate any other mitigation measures into the construction of the process or, or the, of the project. Um, and many, and, in all likelihood, we'll have to do something very unique and, um, well, not unique, but, um, extensive to make sure that it's extremely safe for everybody who potentially be using that, that site.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Del Sol?
Yeah, a couple of issues, uh, on the dog park, so-called dog park, um, you answered one of my questions, um, if we could, the park that's there now, we could take a quarter of that park, like we said, to fence it in.
Mm-hmm.
Because no matter what we do here, you're talking three years before we step on that field, if it even happens.
True.
On Seven Acre Park.
Right, so you're-
We have a lot of people up here talking about the dogs, you know, I bring my dog down there, you know, um, but if you fence in an area that you walk, you walk in the park on the leash, let them loose in the area that's confined just for dogs itself.
Yep. Yeah.
You may have to watch them, so if some people are just gonna run around, but I think we have to jump on something down there so it's fenced in.
Correct, correct, yeah, and, um-
People have walked the path as safe, uh, from all dogs that are off the leash.
Right, and that's an excellent point, there's, there's two points there, one is policing, making sure that people actually use the dog park if it gets constructed, and two is the way a dog park is constructed, um, there's different ways that it can be managed, uh, in some communities, they actually have a, a certification or licensing process before anybody can actually use a dog park, so that they know that it's residents of the community and that their dog isn't, hasn't had a past record of being an issue within the community. Um, in other places, they just provide, um, basically a two-fenced step area whereby you go into an area with your dog on the leash, you close the gate behind you, you unleash the dog, then you go through another set of gates into the dog park. Um, there's a lot of different ways that you can handle this, and that's partially what the police chief and, and, um, the inspect, the city services director are meeting on to discuss what the best approach is for, for this case.
Aye, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mister Erickson, you had said that the design's gonna stay the same, it's roughly six to nine months to put together the design, regardless of-
Well, the schematic design that's in the capital improvement plant, program, is what we had at the time, as what we had heard from various people who, who, you know, we talked to the school department and other stakeholders that said these were really important things to include in the park. Um, a design, you know, we'll, we'll probably have an initial schematic design to the next level, meaning usually have, the schematic design is just that, a schematic, but usually during the design process, you'll have like a twenty-five percent design, a seventy-five percent design, and then a full design, and each step, you, we, you know, in theory, could have different tweaks to the design, um, so we haven't, the first step is really to take that schematic, make sure that it's actually truly consistent with what, what the public wants and, and what we hear tonight. Clearly, there's a need for a dog park, so I don't think that's gonna be going anywhere, clearly, there's a need for a track, so I don't think that's going anywhere, so that kinda limits us on what we do next. Um, then we can certainly do a, a, you know, public process at the twenty-five percent design phase, and each, each step gets just a little bit more refined, basically.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, it usually takes six to nine months to complete.
And as we go through the design phase to see what's gonna best serve the community, the remediation issues, that'll just, it would be various options, whatever you can take, depending on what you find, the design will continue forward and try to incorporate whatever-
Oh, yes, yeah, if we find remediation out there, for example, if we do testing in April and we find that there's an immediate danger or hazard, we have to address those regardless of what's happening with the design. Um, and regardless of what happens with the testing that we might do in April, the design can move forward and we'll just incorporate whatever's needed from a remediation perspective into the, really, the construction documents is when you start, um, really fine tuning how you're gonna handle the site remediation work.
What would you recommend in terms of what do you anticipate being the number of, uh, test sites on the area given the history of the site?
Um, for the purposes of addressing, uh, former Counsel Bruno's questions, um, it's probably going to be, you know, maybe five, I'm, I'm guessing, depending, she, she had mentioned that she had specific areas that she wanted to be looked at, and when I talked to her outside of the meeting, she had mentioned it's, it's, you know, maybe a handful of areas, so, based on that conversation, I'm thinking maybe, maybe five tests at, at most, maybe ten.
And I guess depending on what you find, you might be to open-
Right, we might need to, it might open a can of worms, it might prove to be nothing.
Sure.
Um, with regards to the design work, that really depends on the design, so once we get beyond schematic and once we go to twenty-five and fifty percent design, or seventy-five percent design, then we'll start refining exactly what do we need to do with the existing additions, with any existing contaminated soils, um, in all likelihood, uh, we probably won't be touching the contaminated soils, we'll just be raising the elevation of the site itself, bringing in new soils, or working with the existing soils to level it out so that you're really not impacting any of the contaminated soils out there right now. Um, that's probably what would happen, but without the full design or, or without more than just schematic design, it's hard to know.
Okay, great, so it's, uh, go put the con-
No, of course, yeah, a lot of that gets worked out through the design process.
Uh, Counsel Hanlon?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, through you, Mister Chairman, um, I can clear with Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Counsel Palatano, that happened, um, but I do remember the park being built, and I do remember they're talking about passive use only, the, uh, you could walk on the, on the park, on the, on the asphalt only, not to step onto the grass. The, the area was tested, and this is what I want to say, you should probably try to find those, those soil tests somewhere, because they, they tested the soil first.
Yep.
And then, secondly, they put tons and tons of earth on top of that area where the park was going to be, and they said the reason for the, it being a passive park is because what was in the other soil could leach up through it.
Potentially.
It would, just, it would be interesting to find out if that, in fact, has ever happened.
Well, that's what we had the LSP review and the visual test that we did about three to six months ago, was that LSP, which is a licensed site professional, they're licensed by the state to essentially work on these types of sites. That LSP reviewed all of those past results, reviewed both the soil that was on site that was dirty, plus reviewed all the notes on the soil that was brought in to cap the site, that's the cap that I'm talking about, um, and then did a visual inspection to see, has there been any indication of any of that upward mobility movement of the, of the contaminated soils, and it was his professional opinion that no, there in fact has not been. With that said, we can certainly, you know, take it to the next step and, and, you know, start digging holes in there, if that's the, if that's the will of the council.
My second thought is, uh, that when we built that, we would have put a chain link fence around that complete park, and then there was supposed to be a second chain link, maybe ten yards out from it, this was supposed to be a dog walk, has that ever happened, I haven't been down there in all that time, so-
Um, portions of that second chain link fence are up, but not the entire chain link fence, um, and I'm not, uh, I'll have to go back and check the records to see who was on the hook for actually installing that fence, whether it was the previous owner or an existing owner that currently owns the site, you know, an abutting site, I mean, um-
I think it was, I think it was the city.
Maybe it's the city's liability, okay, concerned.
Nothing there, just out of it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely go back and, and, and look at the records on that and talk to who was here at the time.
Uh, Counsel Simonelli?
Thank you, uh, Mister President, through you, through, um, Erickson, uh, I'd like to know really is, what is the delay here, it seemed like it's been open for almost like two years, it seemed like nothing's been going on, I mean, they could, like, Counsel Del Sol, they, you know, they could fence in something, or, what is someone dragging their feet here, I mean, you know, it seems like it's, nothing's being done in the last two years, I mean-
Um, well, uh, if you're talking about a delay in the design work, um, the, the city council only appropriated the funding, um, with this year's bond allocation, and then it, it's just taken us a little while to actually get a consultant on board because we had to go and actually review and get a couple proposals from various consultants to make sure that we had a cost- had a cost beneficial proposal, as well as somebody highly qualified to do the design work. With regards to the review of existing conditions, and we have been working on that, it's part of the, of the most recent delay with physically getting out there and actually doing test samples was more weather-related, and the fact that we do have to bid out this work, meaning we have to follow state procurement rules and regulations, we can't just hire somebody to do that, and that can take time, depending on the extent of our work, and so I would, I would, you know, say that, that I don't think we haven't been, been waiting to do this work, it's just sometimes the process can take some time.
It seems like it should have been done, you know, should have been in the process a couple of years ago, but it seems like we're just starting from, from scratch again here, you know, these, these things were already, they've been open for a couple of years, like the dog park, they never really did any more improvements. But I guess with all the, the procedure with the soil and everything, I guess that's what it takes, but I just thought, you know, from a common man's point, as far as, you know, putting up, like Counselor said, you know, maybe just put a temporary, keep the problem for the, a dog area, well, then the people can walk down it, you know, very simple. But anyway, that's the way politics are in this city, so. One more thing about, is the parking, is there, where would you park down there? We've walked with, down the, the entrance there.
So there are some spaces in the parking lot that have directly butts the lot that are designated for the park, I think there's about 15 or 20 spaces down there.
Where, where was that?
So if you go in off of Norman Street onto Air Force Road, so you're sort of behind where Teddy's Peanut Butter is, and you take a left onto Air Force Road, so you're going back towards where Metro Rock is and Sky Zone, and that whole 69 Norman Street complex. Boston Coach's parking lot, the back end of that parking lot facing the park, that row is designated for city parking use.
Is that parking marked, where you, people can actually know where to park?
It, it's not necessarily marked, you know, for city use only, but it's seldom, that, that parking lot is seldom full during, during peak demand times. We can certainly see if we can get some, you know...
Yeah, I mean, people...
City parking signs up there, for sure.
I mean, you come into Tremont Street, if you go, if you're stuck, you got the, the gas, the gas, I mean, the maintenance garage there, and if you go there, you say, oh, where am I going to go?
Yeah, the challenge is there's no direct connection from Tremont Street onto Air Force Road, you have to go up and around and come into the site that way.
I mean, they think there should be some more, some more signs to let the people know if they come that way, where am I going to park?
Right, and maybe there could be a way to accommodate parking on the Tremont roadside, and then people walking over, that could, we can look at that.
Mr. Erickson, I know we had you here for a while, would you answer the questions? And I have two quick ones. Do we have tennis courts on Tremont Street?
There are two tennis courts on Tremont Street, but for high school competitions, you need to have four. So the idea was with the new park, maybe you can accommodate two there, with the two on Tremont Street, you can have your four so that the ten, the high school tennis team can actually accommodate matches.
Is the hockey rink, is that the tennis court also?
The hockey rink is not also a tennis court, but the hockey rink is right next to the tennis courts.
Is hockey rink now a popular, popular use? I'm not sure, I'm not...
It comes and goes, they use it quite a bit.
I was going to say if it was...
A lot of times when I go by there, especially after school hours, it's being used.
And also the Seven Acre Park, you know, I, obviously going to make it for athletics because we don't have a track in the city.
Correct.
Obviously with the, the sports coming on, I believe there's lacrosse coming on, and there's soccer's a growing sport.
Soccer, field hockey as well.
Areas of field hockey. I mean, that's kind of the priority that, you know, should be there, if they get the tennis courts out there, it would save the green space, I, just personally, I think that would be, uh, great.
Yeah, so the field itself, you're, you're exactly right, it's, the current schematic shows soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, as well as track and field events, because you can accommodate all the different track and field events that go along with that. The tennis courts was a schematic design, if that's, gets pulled out because there's not as much of a desire to put them there, we can certainly do that. Again, that was just a schematic because we knew there was a need to have four tennis courts together to accommodate the needs of a tennis team at the high school, and the idea is that there's already two down there, you could potentially have two more. We've met with the school department about that, and they are looking into whether or not that's worth doing.
Or connect the two of them in the, in the hockey rink?
We, we can look at that too, and we've actually had that discussion as well.
So this way you have multi-purpose without actually taking up any more green space than we have. You know, I, we've had you here for a while, and I, thank you very much, I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Counselor Floria.
I just have one quick question. My concern is that you said you were, you were going to meet with the head of city services and Chief Maisy to see if they could temporarily put a dog park there?
Right, so, so they were, we had a separate meeting today whereby the, because they've been also receiving phone calls about challenges with dogs down there as well. I personally have not, but they, they mentioned that they have also been receiving phone calls. So they, at that meeting said, hey, why don't we meet on this, let's try to come up with a solution and, and we'll, because it's a public safety challenge.
My, my main concern is, because, I mean, I made the call as far as the sign, the mayor's office, great, in two days, the signs went up. The signs went up, the dogs can't be without leashes, but there's nobody there to see that.
Right, enforcement's a challenge.
To enforce it. So if you decide to make a temporary dog park, I want to make sure there's someone there to enforce it, because I don't want anybody in the city ever to get hurt.
Great.
All right, so that's very, very important, and this board needs to understand that we can have a park, but money comes with it, and we, and there's also an expense. I'm not against a dog park, but we need to enforce that they're using the leashes and to make sure that they don't go after the kids. I mean, there's a lot of kids in the city, there's a lot of people that walk that park, like, like, um...
They should have muzzles too.
Yeah, so, we need, yeah, but we need, we, signs don't mean anything if we don't have the enforcement behind it.
True, right.
So we have to figure out what you're going to do if you decide to put even a temporary dog park there. My answer, my question to you is, what are we going to do to enforce that these dogs are definitely fenced inside and they're not getting loose?
Right.
You have to put someone down there. So put a time when the dogs can go down there and run, and, and that's it. That's my main concern, so, thank you.
Erickson, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
What would you like to do with this piece?
Excuse me, Ms. Mary, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, on the honor, on the...
Ms. Chell, yes.
I'd like to ask one question, and then I'm going to refer this back on the agenda. How many months or weeks before you come back with some answers to all these questions so that I can put it back on the calendar and get some answers?
Right, so regarding the design work, you'll likely hear from us when we're ready to go forward with like a public meeting of sorts for the first round of the schematic design. That would likely happen in the next few weeks. Regarding the testing, that is really weather-dependent, if we have a heavy winter, which it seems like we're having, I, it's, we might not be able to get out there much before April.
If I, if I gave you, say, two months to have you come back, you'd have the answers to most of these questions, or is that two?
I, I would, I would hope to.
All right.
You know, again, weather-dependent, that's my goal.
I'd like to lay this over, or not lay it over, I'd like to...
Excuse me, Ms. Mary, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to bring this back on the calendar, first meeting in April.
So make a motion to refer it back to sponsor.
No, he just asked for later.
Oh, later, so you want to grant further time?
Yeah.
Make a motion to grant further time for the last meeting in April?
First meeting in April.
Motion made, second, grant further time for the last meeting in April. All in favor?
First meeting in April.
First meeting in April. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Clerk number 38.
Item number 38, resolution sponsored by Counselor Sal Sichetta that a representative of Comcast appeared on next meeting to explain the problem a number of citizens are having with the digital box systems are going out and they're losing hours of TV before it is corrected.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on this...
Counselor Chell.
I've had problems with Comcast, as many of you people have, and I've heard from a number of people, not a number, two or three people called me and told me that their digital box goes out completely, and they call Comcast, and they go through some rigmarole as to why it happened, because they're rebooting their prob, programs and so on and so forth. One person said his 86-year-old father was without TV for almost three days before he went down, called up, and did, did what he had to do. I know in my case, my TV has gone out maybe two or three times, but I know enough to know what to do because it was told what to do. There are a number of people that don't know enough what to do, and that's why I'd like to have this sent to committee and have a representative from the Comcast people explain why these digital boxes are giving us so much problems.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor.
Could I ask the sponsor to also add Verizon to see why they're not allowed in the city or they're not in the city?
We, we had that, we had that.
Okay, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, we had that at an Alderman meeting, Verizon will not come into the city because it's too costly.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion out there to refer this to government operations, public safety and public service. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It's been referred out.
Is it by the level of Verizon?
Also, yep.
Yes.
Also, yes, also to, and, it has it on, yep. Clerk read item 39.
Item number 39, is known as sponsored by Counselor Sal Sichetta, the committee on legislative affairs election, review the odd even side parking ban for snow removal to work out some problems and approve the ordinance.
Counsel Chell.
Yeah, I've had a couple of people tell me that when they go to the even side of the street, they lose a number of parking spaces because of fire hydrants. And I understand years ago, the no parking was people cannot park on the street, that not, they have to park on the hydrant side of the street so that they don't lose any streets. One good example was Waters Avenue. When they parked on the even side of the street, they lose seven parking spaces, and the people on Main Street come down and they lose even more parking spaces. So maybe we could look at this again and see if we could come up with a better idea so people don't lose parking spaces. So I want to send this to committee again.
Public safety.
No. Motion made, second, refer this to legislative affairs and election. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It was sent to legislative affairs election committee. Clerk, can we go on?
Item number 40, is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Peter Polatano and Counselor Liam McKinnon, the mayor's office ensures that all U.S. flags on municipal property comply with the United States Code, Title IV, Chapter 1 of U.S. Flag Code.
Counselor Paul Towns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been approached by several individuals who are members of various veteran organizations, and though I think, I feel the city does a great job with keeping, keeping our, our flags in compliance, there are a few issues, unlit flags, signs hatch. I've already spoke to the mayor's office about one, one issue, and I'm confident that they're going to address that, but I would like to make sure that we as a city are setting the example for, for the public as far as making sure that our flags are in compliance with the, with the law. So I would, motion, just, I would like to send this to the mayor's office with a response back on the March 24th meeting.
Second.
Sir.
Motion made, second, to refer this to the mayor's office for a response from March 24th. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Clerk read item 41.
Item number 41, resolution sponsored by Counselor John Liam McKinnon to invite Senator Sal DiGiannico, the head of Little Eagle, representative from the mayor's office, to appear at next meeting of government operations, public safety and public service relative to explaining the $50,000 earmark to do over the snack shack and bathrooms at Sacramento Park.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yeah, I spoke to the senator, he will appear at that meeting that we do have, if we could just refer this to government operations, public safety and public service, that would be fine.
Motion made to refer this to the committee of government operations, public safety and public service. All in favor?
Aye.
And invite, obviously invite the senator, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I request, can we raise the reading of this report to the traffic commissioner?
Motion made, and second, to refer to traffic...
If we could, if we could, just for the view of, we can read that.
We'll, we can read them.[1681.83]